Good evening. Welcome to the Scottsville Planning Commission meeting. This is a special meeting today, March first, two thousand and twenty-three. My name is Matt Wallace. I serve as Scottsville's Town Administrator. Our meeting is held in compliance with the town of Scottsville's public meeting policies, the State Freedom of Information Act and the state's open meeting laws. We're meeting here physically at the Town Hall four oh one Valley Street in Scottsville. We also have opportunities for the public to to view our meeting and participate both by phone and online. This is a special meeting that does include a public comment period, although there's no advertised public hearing on this agenda. If you're viewing the meeting in the in the future on our YouTube channel, thank you very much. The local time here now is seven two P M. We need to share the public meeting order. Okay, Mr. Gritsko is here remotely. Mr. Gritsko, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
Is that okay on his sound level?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Hey, everybody.
Mr. Gritsko, could you could you identify where you are and the reason that you can't be with us this evening?
I am at my house and I am not in the best of health at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. I'm glad you can join us remotely and I hope you feel that it's me.
Thank you.
All right, you'd like to call the meeting to order seven oh three P M. Roll call, please.
Andrew.
Here.
Call to you, Adam.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Grisco.
Here.
Spassman.
Here.
All right, thank you. Very late agenda today. Do we have agreement on this? Can I have a motion?
I make meeting to approve the agenda already.
Second.
Awesome.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, very good. Thank you. Matters from the public?
Hello. Mr. Armstrong, I see you on the Zoom. Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to share with us preliminarily?
No, thanks.
All right, thank you, sir.
So we don't have this on the agenda.
No, but I have it. It's available for you to take with you and look at before this, before we get into it on the agenda Monday.
Okay. All right, so no, no public comments. Let's jump into old business comprehensive plan, which is our new and long term business for the year. Comprehensive plan and two thousand and twenty-three goals. Actually, should we talk about two thousand and twenty-three goals?
Sure.
So when I was looking through old emails, I found that that sheet where you'd broken down what you wanted us to look at in two thousand and twenty-one as far as zoning.
Yeah, thank you.
And you broke it down by quarter, and I think we got through the first quarter, but then I think we lost it because we that was the year that we had a lot. So if we could pick that up, and I know some of it's mentioned in the comp plan, so it will perfectly align with getting this worked on a little bit more. You have that. You're gonna look into that.
I was gonna ask you, do you have do you have that printout with you?
I gave it to you.
It's probably still on my desk then. Those were a it was a to do list of zoning updates that followed the small area plan adoption, and they were organized basically from easiest to hardest, and we did the first three that were easy. The Village Residential update was there. Main Street parking and rezoning, some public plans that were improperly residential zone, those got done. Some of the harder ones had to do with livestock in town, you know, the the rules on everything from chickens to pigs, where do you draw the line on animals in within a town? Accessory dwelling units, things like backyard cottages, the matrix of parking requirements that go with all of our commercial uses, that sort of thing. And I it was meaningful and all connected to the small area plan, but you're right, we only got through, I think, the first three out of ten or so.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick suggestion in terms of a philosophical thought. It's probably better if we avoid the conversation about which came first, the chicken or the egg. That's just should be for another time.
Well said.
My bad attempt at humor, y'all.
You have to you have to regulate eggs in addition to chickens.
Oh.
It's a difficult priority setting.
Okay. Um, yeah, I wish I knew what email that came from, but I found the PDF in. I think I found it in an email in an email, and then I closed the email and didn't flag it, so I don't know which one it came from. And then when I tried to find it again, I couldn't. So hopefully that narrows it down for you. We know the timeframe.
Yeah, sure.
It was February two thousand and twenty-one, so. So I'm just waiting on that time period. Okay. Um, so I would like to see what we can tackle that from that in two thousand and twenty-three. I have a feeling that that might have been just a little bit ambitious to to tackle all that in one year.
For sure.
But what other two thousand and twenty-three goals do we have aside from the comp plan? I mean, I think.
One of the things I I think would be good to talk about a little bit would be just the parks for the town, the green system, and just to have a conversation about just thoughts that we have related to Emerald Neckless, the Van Cleef Nature Area. Just be good to get thoughts that all the planning commission have on that. We've will do more in the future. This may or may not be a year to do that, but it's good that we kind of chat about some of those things.
I think that'll come up in the Natural Resources section.
Yes. Well, some of it, some of it would, some of it's on there, some of it would be some additional thoughts.
Okay.
Yep. This this is it. Mr. Gritsko, I'll share this with you so you can see it. The last edit that I have to this was right about one year ago. And as you, as you can see, the village residential got done, but we never took on parking, building height. We have, we have zoning code on payphones still. The skill games machines have continued to have a fuzzy state law, so probably just as well, we didn't do that because it has continued to be a hot potato in the General Assembly. Livestock, accessory cottages, P U D was in there. And the useless on on commercial buy rate.
We started that.
Yes.
We did start that.
Yes. These these had been flagged within the small area plan process, but could certainly be looked at again. Are they still important? Which ones might you like to take on? Do some of them feel more timely now?
Sometimes things just happen organically and and if we couldn't get to it, we, you know, we certainly had a lot of other important responsibilities, so we can't feel bad about not tackling a to do list like that.
Sure. Sure.
But I think that, you know, it it popped into my head because some of it is relevant here. We talk about zoning a bunch of times in in the comp plan, obviously such a crucial part of how we help town do what we want it to do. Um, but yeah, the the master plan for the parks, can you pull that up again for the Van Cleef? Because I, we, have we, I think we've gotten that and looked at it, but not like in an actual conversation, just something that we were passed at some point in time.
Okay.
Now we know.
We did a, we did it originally in twenty sixteen, and then we did it a revision in twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Cool. It's online here. And it has has detail on the park property.
I don't know, maybe you didn't see that.
Is that bringing it down?
No, forty-three pages.
Parkmaster plan.
Wow, such a little town. We sure have a master plan. They're quite large.
Matt, is this the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, or the two thousand and nineteen?
I believe it has the final, I believe it has the final update. What did we? Yeah, we did. We did this.
As an appendix.
Yeah, instead of instead of rewriting the whole document, we tapped on an appendix.
That's right.
A progress report and acronyms. Shifting somewhere, I was recognizing that like building bathrooms in the park is is ahead of it. But the
I can't believe I didn't know that a lot of the Van Cleef area with trails and everything was private.
What you think of as the Van Cleef is is Dr. Hurd's land and now southern land, a lot of it.
Yeah.
So are all the trails on his land?
The, I mean, the sewer easement is, but our, the trails that we created intentionally, are those all maintained on the Van Cleef proper, or is that?
Yeah, this is, this is, everything you see right there is town property. What you're referring to with Dr. Hurd is up the Mint Creek Trail. We do have a easement on the trail that goes all the way up, almost to Paulette Town, but what you see there, that's all town land.
Okay.
So when you say we have an easement, are you referring to?
The town of Scottsville, we.
The backline? So when we go up there and we walk all the way up to Paulette Town, we're not really supposed to do that?
No, you can't. That is, that's an easement. We have an easement that goes all the way up. There's a tech, there's a technical spot where about two hundred yards, Matt, you might explain that last part of it.
And we're going to continue to maintain that easement despite the land changing hands?
Well, that's a perpetual easement.
Okay, we, because we had this, we had this question when we received this preliminary site plan of what would happen on that easement, and I didn't, Mr. Gritsko knows the history of it better than I do.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, we have the easement. Yeah, whatever happens to that land, we have the easement.
Okay, okay, good. That's good, because that was one of the things that Kendra was going to get back to us on. Okay. All right, well, that's helpful. That's really helpful here. Um. All right, so fortunately, we're not going to be redoing that this year, but it is helpful for us to know and and we'll definitely address the Van Cleef and natural resources during the comp plan process.
Right, okay.
Okay. All right, I think that's probably enough two thousand and twenty-three goals, because I'm sure we'll have lots of things.
Yeah, the the document that you were talking about that has the two thousand and twenty-three goals in it, were you saying that was from two thousand and twenty-one?
It it was something that was created in two thousand and twenty-one for our goals for that year, zoning ordinances that needed to be looked at.
Yeah, because my, my, you know, tenure doesn't go that far, so I was just curious if you had a document you could send to me. Because I'd like to be able to follow along.
Yeah, this this thing, I I found it on this drive, and you had found it in your email history and asked me about it, so it's on here. I'll send it. I'll send it back around. Then, yeah, sure, here's what we had identified a year and a half ago and got some of it done. Okay.
And maybe throw like one item on the agenda each month, maybe just one.
Worth a try, yeah.
I mean, take home if the ordinance would probably.
Right.
Along with the boarding house, the big morning, there you go. Okay. All right, thanks, Matt.
You've got some comfortable being in the conversation about things that we've heard. We're obsolete.
Isn't this great? Isn't this great?
Okay, so we, our homework for today was to go over certain parts of the comprehensive plan. Again, huge document, seventy-seven pages. We talked about just tackling the objectives and implementation strategies to begin with. So land use, Mr. Gritsko.
I had, I had some questions about the the lettering of this document.
Okay.
And the objective and engine and you can strategy back there. It goes from A, B, C, back to B and C.
Good place to start.
You know, what is?
It does. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Can I see the first page of your document, the first page, your cover page? That's the draft.
Okay.
Here's.
I had that same issue. It, the the one of your binder, the one of the binder is.
That means I probably pulled an old copy. If anyone else has that, if anyone else has that problem, this is a clean final adopted copy. I know, we went. Good, good, good catch. Right. And I'm afraid the same thing will happen with this update process. We'll go through many different versions, and you may find yourself like, well, this text from the October version I liked, can we please put that back before we do our final adoption? Some version control is tricky.
Well, and it's worthwhile to just put the word draft in large letters on the first page until we get to a point where we have revised it.
Yes.
There you go, watermarks.
Well, the first thing we need to update are the names. None of them are us.
Yeah, this wasn't our, oh.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Great.
I apologize.
So, yeah, I and I I noticed some other weirdness too. I'll wait till my turn to get to it with the with the lettering or numbering. Um, but just to be a little more clear, we were going to go over the implementation strategies. There are four sections and discuss how we've proceeded, whether we've accomplished goals, set actions in motion, whether we just don't think it's something we've spent much time on in the last five years, or whether we think it's something that really isn't a priority any longer.
Right, right.
So it's kind of a broad topic, but if you, if each of us could go over our sections um kind of summarize and and give us some points to consider for whether we should count these off as completed or not. I hope that's helpful.
Absolutely. I I found like some of these statements are are difficult to judge because they're not worded very specifically.
Yeah.
It's it's general language, and so you you wind up with a lot of sort of shrugging is like, yeah, okay, that statement's fine. Everyone can agree with it. It happens a little bit when you like plan by consensus, you arrive at wording that nobody hates. But then when you're trying to like measure performance, well, did that happen or not is tricky.
Well.
I was just gonna say that when I was looking over my section, um, I felt the same way. I almost felt like a companion document. You know, that's current to what we're actually working on would be good, but it just creates more paper and more words and all of that, but I think without limiting with the future, it would be good to be more.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Things, things will happen that you didn't anticipate in your plan, and then you're looking like somebody applies with a business that's new, and you try, you're trying to look for, is this application consistent with our plan? But if it's uh, something you didn't think of, you want to give yourself some flexibility.
Well, and also, I mean, it mentions the six to one acre tire factory and how a detailed plan needs to be created. How can you create a detailed plan unless you're the developer and or unless it's you're insisting on a public-private partnership?
Right.
You could put in a wish list, you could put in the things that you need to see happen before something could be developed, but unless you're doing the development yourself, so some of this is a plan for future investors and future business owners, not necessarily for the town to implement.
And I think that's a really helpful bit of specificity, that many of these plan strategies are things that the capital T town government doesn't control, so I and I I would like to be more specific about the agency. If there are things that we do that we say that we're going to do them, if we need somebody else to do it, we should say who does it.
Well, and my train of thought went in a different direction to that because I kept thinking that um, we needed to be more proactive
Yeah.
um, about projects in the town and maybe trying to initiate
Yeah, sure.
those kinds of things and making contacts with people that's that are a little more proactive. Um, you know, that's part of what my section was entail, I mean, and I don't know, we'll talk about it when I get to it, but yeah, I guess never mind.
These objectives are written more like goal statements, not objectives. When I think of an objective, I think of like the SMART acronym, they're specific, they're measurable, they're attainable.
Yeah.
Using a little time weight or something. Um, and these are more like, they're they're worded like goals, and then the strategies are, okay, you know. There's, there are good strategies, but there's no there's no explanation for how we'll attain any of these things.
Right.
And also, it's kind of in the snow, right? It's almost like they should all be objectives. Goal. This is a goal.
The little woman, you know.
Yeah.
Well, when we get into it, could you give us the examples that stand out to you?
From all over this draft document.
Yeah.
What other things stood out? As like did you like the way that it was laid out? Aside from the specific, you know, goal versus objective versus strategy? I mean, I kind of liked it, how it's giving you just a general goal and then talking about a little bit more. Maybe they're mislabeled, but I kind of like that it's laid out that way.
I like it too. I just felt like the town was failing on a lot of of the strategies, like these are great goal statements and then great objectives, but it doesn't seem like the town is a cohesive unit working toward a lot of these strategies.
It's because there's so many with with a hundred strategy statements, we can't we can't do them all.
Well, and and all like volunteer based too. Okay, helpful to keep in mind. If we want this to be attainable, it needs to be taken into account that we have a, you know, limited budget and limited financial resources and and people resources.
Another thing that might make this resource a little more helpful would be to maybe link to it the ordinances that pertain to it, you know, like how it all comes together and because I look at this and I don't see it as a tool for someone to come in and do the right thing, you know what I mean? Um, that's why when I was looking at the sub development thing, no wonder they want to check in. We don't, um, that's a lot. Um.
So like like a footnote or a hyperlink telling people where they could see this ordinance or if they could see this.
You know, some sort of, um, some sort of cohesion of that, you know, just trying to say this is what we're talking about when we're goal setting in this area, you know, this pertains to the ordinances that control this in, you know, our commercial downtown area and things like that.
Can help a lot with the length of the plan too, if you expect that a lot of people are going to work with it on a computer or a tablet, and you sprinkle it with links and then to say like, we don't have to say a whole lot about the water system because we don't run the water system. If you want to see the map of water lines, go over here.
And that's really helpful. Um, I think that you do, you all do that a little bit on the website. Um, I often look and go, thank God, they didn't go into that whole thing because now I can just go, well, if I need to, but that's not what I'm looking for, you know?
I think it would also be good if we could have somebody um to that end, you know, that that email that you sent was that, hey, when we're hearing these things around town about how, you know, people are worried about the water supply and and we've already answered this question, maybe when we start, when we're doing those research, the research, we can start linking back in our document to the research that we've done, so that things are acceptable for one major comp plan instead of, you know, oh, we did all of this research for this specific project and now we're gonna forget about it.
It makes a bibliography for everything you know, so you know, welcome a new planning commissioner board. If you read this, you'll understand what we have and what we're doing.
Right.
Because it's all. First step is admitting you have a problem.
I do find, you know, we did all of that research for the downtown area plan and the upper Bourbon Street, and it was all applicable to what was being proposed to the tire factory.
Right.
But that had kind of gotten lost in the shuttle.
Because it was just, it was just meeting notes and it didn't live in like a bigger picture and.
Right.
It's a good, good point about resources for this plan, and many of these discussions we have already had, so past presentations and reports will be really helpful for us in updating this.
As long as they're recent enough, yeah.
Right.
There, there's a ton of facts in here that are going to need to be updated, and I guess one question I had is what years data do we go with? Because I mean, obviously, when it's pertaining to census, we have to go with two thousand and twenty, that's the most recent census, but when it's talking about, I don't know. Um, maybe I'm jumping ahead, I'm jumping ahead, but anyway, there's a lot of facts, a lot of statistics to be updated. We'll talk about that down the road. Okay. All right, do we want to jump into section B?
Sure.
What was section A given?
A was just the introduction.
Oh.
I know, it's also it's an introduction to. A is the introduction to objectives and implementation strategies. It talks about um, did anyone actually read that? Because that could be helpful in answering some of your your points. Sorry, Dan, I'm putting you off again, sorry.
I mean, yeah, then that's why I think they, the objectives aren't more specific.
Okay.
They just felt more like a continuation of the broader goal statement.
It says it follows from the goals and are more specific elements of the broader goals.
Right. I did, I, they are more specific in that, you know. They weren't specific objective statements, but they they were specific to the broader goal.
Maybe needs to be renamed, we could figure that out.
But if if that um, division isn't helpful, like that could go away and have, you know, a major goal and then a smaller number of strategies that support it.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Gotcha.
Only the very basic table of contents in this thing is required by law. You can organize it lots of different ways.
And I do agree that the outline is too much going from a goal to an objective to strategies. I feel like the strategies well, I've already said this, sorry, need to be more specific, and I don't know, you know, where we want to draw the line on that, but I think if I inherited this document to make an action plan, that it'd be really difficult to do. Um, so I don't know why we don't go ahead and actually make strategies, because this is updated every five years or whatever, and so it needs to have more concrete action items associated with it, because the next group is going to, you know, update that in five years to suit their needs. I think it's time to be more concrete about what our strategies and goals are.
Yeah. Do, Mr. Gritsko, do you find that helpful at the council level? Like if the if the plan were specific to the level of detail of like? Yeah. Do, Mr. Gritzko, do you find that helpful at the council level? Like if the, if the plan were specific to the level of detail of like. Plant more trees in town parks, that you could use that for council decision making, or or does council not want their hands tied that specifically?
You know, that's a tricky question to ask because I think you would have to think of each counselor and. You know, if you, I mean, maybe to say it in the nicest way. If you look at the process that we just went through. It was a a long process that went over a number of years that had a pretty clear. Set of guidelines and things that we made it pretty clear. In the end. I would say what prevailed wasn't what people had written on paper, it was people's opinions, which are fine, so to speak, but. So I guess my question would be, it probably breaks down to individual town counselors as as opposed to saying, how do each. At like, how does the council itself see it? I think that the planning commission's. Job, the best, and I think the planning commission, I have a great respect for the planning commission, is to do the best job. To plan and take many compete, you know, competing different resources, needs. Different opinions, take all those things together and come up with what is the best consensus idea that we can. It, you know, and then maybe over time in dialogue, the council, you know, the council today is also very different than it was just a couple of years ago. So that being said. I think the, in terms of how I would say the planning commission's job is, is to plan, get input, get consensus. Try to be as specific as we think we can, and then it is still a tool that the planning, I mean, the town council will use then to. Do as it will, so to speak.
Yeah.
I hate to always be contrary, but I I don't see where we're getting anywhere. We take each town councilman. And their views into account.
Yeah, you don't, you don't do, you wouldn't do that. That's what I'm saying. You would, you would do it, we would do it as a planning commission, what we think is best as a planning commission. That each individual counselor has to react how they're going to react.
Yeah, well, and I also don't see how we'd be able to ever get through it if we were incredibly specific unless we had a really. Limited number of goals that we, like, we all can get behind, cuz otherwise we'll spend all year just trying to figure out the specifics.
Yeah, one of the wisest things I heard when I first started on town council was from a town council maybe twelve years ago was basically. The issues always come back to the town, so I mean, many of the things we're talking about, people that were talked about ten years ago, twenty years ago, thirty years ago, the question is. How will we resolve them or will we kind of kick the can, so to speak, but in in many ways, this same conversation has been had. Dozens of times before and it's, it's, well, it's worthwhile having it in twenty twenty-three to see where we are now.
That's true.
If we're getting in our own way.
What do you mean?
Well, if we're, if we're not gonna be clearer about our objectives and where we're going in the short term. Then this is just a. I don't know how I would refer to this and go, oh, look at that, we have a strive to retain. You know, essential community services, you know, but.
Right, right. Easy, easy to say and then hard to follow up with, well, how?
Okay.
Yeah, I know what you mean, it's.
That's, that's why I'd really like to get into this a little more to see what our observations were, like, did we get any progress on that? And maybe we don't know, maybe we need that to help us out. And I mean, how many did you say we have? How many strategies?
It's about a hundred.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, we we probably need to, I don't know if we could think of a number that makes more sense, but.
Well, and, you know, let me just use the economic development as an. An example, when you're talking about trying to support the businesses in town and things like that, there's no mention of like. The um Scottsville Chamber of Commerce and any kind of. The easel in between that body, that's not so specific that we would. Trip up that in the future, but it gives a little bit more action to the strategy than just. Supports the businesses in town, you know, we wanna do that, that's an obvious given. I'd just like to see a little bit more of a push towards what we can do. To make it happen. The strategy should be very specific.
Yeah, yeah.
The goals are for being not specific and the, the objectives. Should be more specific. The objective, the strategy should be, I really feel like. The objectives need to be specific also, like, that's what an objective is. It it's a specific statement of what you are going to do and how you're going to do it and in what, like, in what timeframe you're going to do it. That's what an objective is. Um, so I don't. I I think all of this needs to be much more specific and it needs to be pared down. It needs to be more realistic about what we can actually accomplish with the town.
So how do you accomplish having it more specific and pared down?
Well, I think, you know, we need to go through here and decide, um. What is the priorities have and what are the nice to have? And then in in, in keeping with, you know. The town budget, what can we actually accomplish? And so maybe we keep the nice to have, but we, you know, we, and we focus on the things that we're labeling as priority. And we figure out how to do that in, you know, in keeping with the budget and and knowing that our budget is shrinking.
Yeah, this, this economic development strategy about recruiting and retaining services downtown. Hints that you might like want the post office to come back downtown.
Right.
No one did any work to bring the post office back downtown in the last five years, right? Right, uh, so, so be be more clear about where, what do you want.
We need to be thinking about what businesses in the town make the most money. And striving to bring more of those types of businesses into this town, that's a very clear objective.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're, if you're telling me like you did before that, that banks, not credit unions. Make the town a lot of money, then let's go after those businesses and try to make Scottville an attractive place for them to come.
Right.
That's a very important strategy. You know, the farmer's market is a very high visibility thing, it brings a lot of foot traffic into this town. Every week for a a majority of the year. Let's put some resources into beefing up the farmer's market and advertising the farmer's market. And getting people to come to our town and spend money, like, those are very clear strategies.
Yeah, yeah.
That we should be outlining in this plan, in my head.
Well, and I would love to go so far, and maybe this is outside of my purview, but at some point in time, I'd like to look at what are the. Attractions here in town and how can we enhance those and bring them together in under one. Tourism umbrella, um, that's why I was saying that I think that a strategy should say something along the lines of. Partnering with the Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber of Commerce, um, there's been such a divide. Between the town and chamber, I feel, and there's been frustration with the businesses, so. Let's pull it in a little bit more and get involved in the dialogue and what's important to all of us. Uh, for those kinds of things. Those are the kinds of concrete plans that I would love to see. Um, detailed in in this comp plan, you know, how can we do this? Cuz that's pretty much, most of what I wrote here was how.
Yeah.
And why?
Right.
And, you know, that's, yeah.
Yeah, there's very little who does what to make this happen.
Right. Yeah, I mean, and we, we always, we talk about how Scottville is a river town. We don't have access, we don't have access, and that's one of the strategies in my session.
Mm hmm.
That we are failing miserably at and, you know, how do we make this happen? And I, I don't think. Those are specific strategies or objectives or whatever you wanna call them that anybody. Or you, like, everybody wants to see the town have access to our river and, you know, to. Our, our association with the Chamber of Commerce can get more business and. And attract people to the town and, you know, we're saying that we're seeing it towards town. How do we make those things happen?
Right.
Yeah.
So, and then, you know. We bring that kind of stuff in, the town have more money in its budget, and then we can get to some of the nice to have stuff, right, let's.
Now, there's sort of a sequencing for some of these, do this first, and it makes this other thing easier.
Right.
When there's no timing or sequencing into this.
And maybe we need, need to spend a little bit more money, you know, in one area in order to attract people to the town and, you know. So maybe we do need to put a little bit of money up front. And devote some, some of our budget to in the town, local minister and painter and.
Yes. Amen. We've been talking about so many things that would make the town better.
Right.
For so many, ever since I got here.
Right.
Um, you know, the storefronts being the biggest frustration for me.
Yeah.
Um, how so many of them can be vacant with no, no, um. Recourse for that, like, let's find a way to incentivize these owners to rent out. Their properties in in a reasonable aspect, which could make them a lot of money from the town and, you know, get things rolling.
So, um, section three, immediately after. Okay, so what is this?
Yeah, yeah.
Totally, it was, it's a little, okay, so section one is the preface, section two is the. Profile of the town and within that is the objectives and implementation strategy. Section three is the implementation plan, so that's where it starts to talk about how this is happening, how it could happen. Um, the first part of section three is the, a chart that talks about the priorities.
Could you tell me what page it is?
It's twenty-nine, yeah. Um, so I'd be curious to see if, if these items were done. Or where we're at on those. This, the second column where it says strategy. Those numbers, like, for example, the first one, land use downtown zoning, two point three point one. Um, that refers to the goal number within land use, right? Land use is the topic. That would be goal number two, objective three, strategy one. I noticed with, um. The developed community, the last section, the the numbering is off, but I didn't look at the rest of them, so I'm not sure. Um, so, so then my question for you, I I'm seeing. That there's goals and strategies in here, maybe, maybe using the word goal is not correct, but strategies in here. That we may not have, you know, a line item in the budget for, we may not have had a a specific agenda item for it. Maybe town council did, and I don't know, maybe planning commission did in years past, but they're helpful, I think, for. Somebody coming in who wants to know what we value as a town, and it's helpful to have that history too.
And that, that is an important legal use of this document, like, when, when we say encourage development of affordable daycare. But daycare centers require special use permits, so when somebody shows up with an application for that, they can say, please approve my daycare center. It's in your comp plan that you want more daycare centers, and so even if we're not spending money on it, it still helps to make it happen.
Okay, so then that, that big is a question, should we change our zoning to allow them by right in certain places or what should we do?
Yes, if that were an issue, that's, that's another way to think about this, like, well, what are some other, what are some cheap things that we can do to make this easier? Take away the S U P requirement for things you want, yeah.
Okay, so then, so then perhaps we should make a plan that whatever we agree to doing. Whatever goals and strategies, whatever we call them, that we're agreeing to. Put it in a chart like this so that we could have a plan for the first two years, the years after that and so on and. And who's taking action in the budget status, but then maybe have another section for things that are kind of like, I don't know. These are our overall values that we'd like to see for these subjects. That doesn't have to have like specific, cuz it could be anyone working on it, it doesn't have to be town council or planning commission.
Right, but, and I was gonna, part of this implementation guidance shouldn't just be, like. What I see here, it should be, if we're talking about a special use permit, you know, that. That daycare centers are required to have a special use permit, maybe the implementation guidance should be. Change that ordinance, you know, like, we need to be looking for ordinance aligning it with what first things our goals are.
Well, and keep in mind, we only have, you know, a year to get this whole thing across the table, across the finish line. So there's only so much that we could figure out what needs to be changed in our zoning.
Well, I mean, we wouldn't have to necessarily change the zoning, but the strategy could be to update the zoning.
If we're aware of that being a potential way to solve the problem, yeah.
Well, it's another thing that I was kind of talking about as far as being proactive.
Mm hmm.
Um, I feel that we should be finding out who provides daycare up here. And see if any of them are looking to maybe create a daycare center.
Yeah.
Or, you know, if there's someone who's interested in coming from Charlottesville to move here or whatever the case. Some sort of proactive outreach to have some of these, um. These goals and what, what did you call it? Not ideals.
Values.
Values. Um, you know, give it more of a head start, not a jump start.
Do you, do you do some of that, right? Like, if you have a vacant store or something, do you try to find? People that would fill it?
Some be- between the busi- the building owners and the realtors of like, what would work well here, how do we make introductions? But I, I think it would really help to have clearer marching orders, you know, for example, uh. If, if we thought that a, a bank was more important than a dry cleaners and I could, you know, spend time contacting banks, okay? Or vice versa.
I also, um, the Economic Development Committee is no longer, is that correct? Part of government services.
We don't, we don't have a volunteer team that's focused on business recruitment and retention now.
Okay, we need more.
We need a volunteer team to coordinate, to get volunteers and get. Get the forces moving on all these goals that we created.
Well, yeah, and I think that this is what we see is our, our goal, what we're trying to meet, you know. It's not gonna be perfect, maybe that's an implementation strategy. Start creative, we, we can't do all of this by ourselves. We can't do this with the town council. Um, committee, if that, that is it right now, there just, there aren't enough people to do these things. Um, so why don't we start digging into this stuff?
Yeah.
I, I wanna start, I, I really wanna start figuring out what we see as our priorities at the end.
The, the very, the very first one is a, is a doozy for, uh. What do we, what do we mean by healthy, healthy growth?
And, and keeping in mind that we'll have focus groups too, but this, the, the goal, and actually, that's a good point. The goal of what we're gonna leave here today with hopefully is we'll be able to go into our focus groups. A little more focused, we'll be able to say, you know, this is what, um, was a. Plan, whatever word we wanna use, this is what previous comp plans had considered, is this a priority for our community right now? Do we still care about that? What are our priorities as a community? What can we all agree on? So. If we, if we see that something's still open, do we still need to work on it, or do we think it's not a good idea? Or if we've already accomplished that, is it something that still needs to be maintained for the future, or are we done? Can we check it off our list?
Right.
Um, do we all want to? Um, it sounds like we should be asking the same set of questions during the, the focus groups. What are our priorities of the town? You know, here are the strategies that we have listed. Here's what we've met so far, so I think we need to start talking about that before we go into these. These sessions with people, like, here's what we've done to meet these strategies so far. Are these still a priority for the town? And if they aren't, what is the priority now?
So let's come up, maybe what we should do is come up with like a classification system, like, this is done, we don't need this anymore. Um, we've accomplished it, or this is something that's still a work in progress, or this is something that we don't think we need anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that make sense?
There were not very many when I went through this of like. Identifying a specific thing to be done, which got done, and now the goal can be removed. I'll, I'll scan to find one, but there were. I'll I'll scan to find one, but there weren't. There weren't many, a lot more of them are like processes that like, the way the A R B does its business. Advances a bunch of goals, and as long as the A R B keeps doing business the way like business as usual, we're good. But that's not, so like it helps to say that, but it, yeah, but it's never finished.
Okay, so to have a whole one. Um.
Well, I didn't read it because it wasn't my section. Did you guys read it all? Cause that's a lot, but if you did, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Dan, we're we're on your section, land use. Um, unless we don't have Dan, then hopefully someone else did.
Yes, uh, hold, hold on for one second, I just had it cut off there, hold on.
Okay.
This one is. A little bit of what I said before, on the one hand, we. As a town have many times talked about it and we tend to return to it, I think. One of the things that we have to figure out in some level is. How committed are we to pursue what we create, meaning some of that is. Should we, you know, to some level, the process involves robust public debate, involves informational meetings, it allows her lots of. Input for people, and then I guess the question is. When we do that, as we create it, again, it goes back to what I said before, we have to also factor in. Some things that I I thought as a council that we've not thought about is things have changed since covid and obviously we haven't. Factored that in, I mean, this would be our first time to do that, but some of the realities in the way. People live and where they live are different now than they were prior to twenty nineteen and thinking about how that. Impacts Scottsville to some level, it's actually favorable to Scottsville, but but this in particular. I think for me, one of the things that I felt. Most discouraged about what just happened, which I think, you know, if we if we could avoid it in a future. Uh, situation is you'd wanna have a lot of buy-in by people and. That I think means a lot of public input and the ability to talk through. The things like growth rates, there was, if there was, there were simple numbers that we had that we used and people disputed them. I mean, they were even disputed as recently as Monday night on a town council meeting, but it, so we would wanna be. Making sure that the data that we use or data that people agree with, that we're getting things that are on the same page and. That we're doing it in a way that really comes up with a consensus. At the moment, obviously, there's a a split in terms of how people in the town see things, and then also even on this issue of population growth. That's another thing that you might say is a big difference in terms of how people understand it, so we would wanna. Have robust public conversations so that we could do that, because I think then the question is, as a developer comes in or people look and see what we do as a town. Are we creating something that's welcoming to them, or does it? Preclude them if if our particular plan didn't exactly line up with what they wanna do, are we willing to be? Uh, and you know, adjusted, so so for my part, I think the last debate that we went through. To me is dispirits me a little bit on this section, only that. We, I think we need to have robust conversation on these issues, they're real issues, and we need to think about. How to do that, you know, how do we? It go through the process over the next year to get the engagement that helps come up with the best plan we can come up with.
Well, we don't have time to build all a hundred percent agreement on things, but.
Yeah, I I think looking at goal one. We've added thirty thirty six homes, so you know, just, you know, off the cuff, I would say that. Could we maybe say on average, we would get two and a half people per house?
Yeah, that's the stuff.
So that's, you know, eighty some people.
Hmm.
Ninety some people that would be moving into town, so I I think, you know, just with that development alone. You know, not even, not even thinking about the, you know, the number of homes that are going in with this new development. I think we are moving towards this goal in a measured.
Yes.
Slow, you know.
It it's a, it's a really significant trend that didn't exist when this plan was made, that we. Now seem on paper have a development pipeline that fills in. All of the major greenfield land in town.
Right.
And and on paper creates uh like a hundred houses.
Right.
Um, so that's a lot, and if that, if that build out continues over five years. We'll have fairly healthy population growth without doing anything.
Right.
We'll just be talking about site plans and building permits.
Right.
So it puts us in a really different place than we were five years ago, yeah.
Even even with, you know, everything that happened with factory, I think we are moving forward, so I think we can.
Hmm.
Well, to the extent that we can, we can't build the houses, right? So this goes back to. What I was saying for, like, we okayed Men Creek that they didn't build it.
Right.
And. We okay thirty six homes, but it's not gonna be built for several years.
And that 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 does feel like a really important like community question, or maybe for for the builders and realtors among us of like, is this really gonna happen? Because the twenty eight houses at at Pat Dennis have been on paper for fifteen years and they're groundbreaking. So I think it's a fair question from the public, like, is this real? And it's a very different plan for us if like a hundred houses are platted, but none of them actually break ground. Versus a hundred houses are planted and, yeah, in five years, there will be a hundred new families.
How could they show? Uh, their commitments to the community?
Well, he's on, he's on the meeting.
I mean, I'm I feel like it says increase by to eight hundred by twenty thirty, that's seven years from now.
Uh huh.
I feel like these developers.
Wait, I'm sorry, where does it say that? Cause I was looking for that, I knew there was a number, but I don't see it right now, where is it?
In that draft in my run.
Did it fall out of the draft? What 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 pages?
Page fourteen.
Yeah, there, there is a number, it's not in here right now on page fourteen, but I do remember seeing a number at some point in time, maybe. I saw it in the draft too, because that was the number, that was what I was working off of for a while.
It says, ensure that Scottsville's future population is consistent with the vision of maintaining the small town character. Guide healthy growth to a target population of six hundred and fifty by twenty twenty, so it was there. But increasing to eight hundred by twenty thirty and a thousand by twenty forty.
It came out before the final draft, so.
Okay, well, that's in, that's in the background summary now on page eleven.
I I would like this.
It's not a hundred percent of that, but.
First is what I'm looking at.
But, but that's, but that's really hard to, yes, it's nice to have that specificity, but we can't make that happen, like we'll.
Sure, this is the goal, like we don't. I think it should be more specific.
But there's only like so much teeth that we have to make things happen.
Right, but we still have to have a goal, we still have to have something to work towards, and if we're just saying. What made the accent, but guide a healthy growth of business, like that's great, but how are we measuring that we actually are doing this?
Hmm.
I wanted to.
I think this gives some idea of which direction we go, yeah.
And even if we don't, even if we can't control that. I I would argue that we actually can by attracting, if we're saying that this is a goal. We can control that by encouraging growth and encouraging developers to.
And encouraging them to break ground at a certain.
No, I don't think we need to go that far, but I don't think that any developer is gonna be sitting on this, you know. A developer like Southern. Hopefully, it's going to break ground, especially now in twenty thirty on those upper third street. They wanna make lunch.
And and they, and they can be included, it's fair to ask them, like, if if this is, if this is in the community interest and you. Whoever has the ability to influence that, as part of our process, we can ask them what would be. What would help achieve the goal that we in the community want?
Right.
Whatever that is.
Right.
Yeah.
And you know, of course, we can't control economic downturn, you know, things like that, that might put plans on hold for a while. But I think we should still have something more specific and concrete to work towards.
Hmm, hmm.
I agree.
I agree too, I'm 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 playing devil's advocate because. I mean, I just wanna, you know, I hear you guys saying that we wanna see this all be attainable, but I also see it as like a. Big picture like, um. You know, again, mission values, what is it, vision, mission values, like, this is. Part of this is our values, Dave, and our mission statement, it's not necessary, yeah, I mean. It's a plan for how we, do we have to maintain these sections? B, C, D, E, okay, we we could define our own sections for our own community, okay, interesting. What exactly is the legal requirement? What does it tell us we have to do in this comp plan?
Get that right up in the code for you.
That would be helpful, I know we've talked about it again, but I, but I don't.
No, it's okay.
Anyway, I just, I hear you guys saying that you want it to be specific and that you want it to to be attainable. But I also think that this is sort of like a, you know, it's a value statement, so it needs to be.
Well, I think there's room for that in an introduction and a history and this and that and the other, but as far as setting goals. We have to move forward with something, um, you know. I know that everybody was hoping it would be these apartments, but I think that, you know. For the overall look of the town and what's going on, we need marching orders, we need to be able to say. This is what we need, this is how we're gonna, these are strategies for doing that. This is what we think could be good action items for that.
Hmm, hmm.
I just, I I don't agree that it should be homogenized, I think it should be like. Specific to our five year plan, you know, our. Our comp plan as our town has been set up.
Right.
And and so it allows it to be a guide for us to move forward. Um, I think that this holds its back, looking at this makes me feel like, well, I should maybe know what that means.
Hmm.
You know, and and I don't know where to go from there, but I'll be working, yeah, yeah. Agreed, so anyway.
Agreed, yeah, I mean, I, it needs to be trimmed down and and more realistic.
So was, was that what Dan was saying about land use, was that? His presentation on the land use section? Do we have any concrete plans for that section?
Well.
I I think what I was saying, Molly, just to answer your question is no, I I was not saying, I mean, I'm. I'm just, to say this in a nice way, I feel very dispirited by the process we just went through because we ended up. Kind of going through this, but and again, so what we need to do, I think to answer your question, I think it actually is a good idea to have. Specific ideas and that's where you wanna have the public input to get. How people view what they what they wanna do, so in other words, eh, not just, I mean, I've. I've, having been through the process, you know, multiple times, this this particular process. As we go forward, we've been through a time that was a bit divisive, we need to find a way that we get everybody together and figure out. How we can be specific so that it makes it clear both as a town and it makes it clear for developers what we wanna do.
Well, a and a point about specificity. I was told that the two hundred apartments didn't match our small area plan, and that's why. One town councillor voted it down, because the small area plan says mixed use. So if you're talking about specificity and you you're specet- you're you're specifying.
Hmm.
That there should be mixed use, then don't be surprised when your town councillors vote down a plan. That's not mixed use and is only two hundred apartments and five thousand square feet for maybe a gym.
Yeah.
So if you wanna talk about specific, when you start get, when you start getting into the specifics, then we may have other perfectly viable.
Hmm.
Plans that get nixed because people are being really specific, so think about that.
That's true.
It is true.
Okay.
I mean, you you could argue that.
It's it's ve- very fair to use a comprehensive plan that way, and encourage commissioners and councillors when they vote on land use applications. To point to a piece of the comprehensive plan to justify their decisions. Problems arise when a plan is this big and it contains multitudes, so people are pointing at different pages and saying, well. I'm voting because it's justified by this.
Right.
Or I'm voting because it's justified by this, we made a plan that does everything.
But that's fine, I, if that's what, if if we're saying that that's what our priority is, if we want to see. A mixed use facility back there, then yeah, then if it's just two hundred apartments, then shut it and let's move on. That's fine.
But you just, you have to hope that you get a developer that will put mixed use in there, because again, we're not building it, we're not developing it.
Then we go after those businesses, if that's what, that tire factory is one of the biggest things. That this town needs to deal with, and that should be a major priority, so if we're saying that we want it to be a mixed use facility. Or we want it to be a natural park back there, or we want it to be a movie theater, or we want it to be a shooting range. Let's just nail down what we actually want it to be, and now that we have a developer who is interested in actually doing something with the property. Versus just sitting on it.
Yeah.
Then if that's a top priority, then let's go after those businesses as a town. That should be specific.
Hmm, this page twenty three probably had more time spent on it than any other one page in the plan.
Right.
Um, and you can maybe, you can see some compromise in this text, um, which. You know, it predicted the outcome, that we didn't have consensus on this.
Right, and that's fine, I think it's somewhat like, we just have to get over the fact that if, you know. What happened, happened, and let's move on, like, let's figure out what people actually wanna be in this town, if they don't want to. Back there, then let's work as controllers and commission members to figure out what people actually want.
Well, I mean, I guess, I guess one question I have about that goal four would be. Should we, we've, I mean, we implemented the small area plan, which was this, right? Would it be fair to say that the small area plan came about because of goal four?
Eh, uh, yeah, yeah, objective one is make a small area plan.
It is, indeed, look at that, small area plan, so this goal is accomplished. We may not like the small area plan now, because we may, I don't, I don't know, but.
Um, and and.
Came up with it and it said mixed use, so.
Hmm, and we did freeze hasty redevelopment and spot rezoning, like we waited until last year.
One of the things, let me just make one point, just maybe, I'll just say this to be helpful, that I think is. Maybe a very different take on what was just said is. Up until about five years ago, there was no motion, whatever, and I'm very thankful for. All that happened over the last couple of years that moved things to a place where action was taken on the factory, but the only difference now in terms of what's there. Is we have a developer that could pull a trigger at any given moment and the town has no say over what that developer does. So this is not an issue of us having, uh, we don't really hold any cards, so to speak, and so I guess all I'm saying is. When we think about what's happening at the factory, this is a very different situation than a couple of years ago now. In a sense, they hold all the cards, they can do as they choose, and how we negotiate with them. Is it, we don't hold the cards, they do, so now that we, and again, I would say, if those who are interested. I think it's wise to talk to them and see what they think about it, and in that process. It's really, again, we just gave up our ability to influence them.
So so Shannon, his point is. What, how do you incentivize that? How do you incentivize someone to put mixed use at the tire factory?
Well, maybe that should be sailed at this point, maybe. I don't know, I I don't, I don't know what can be done about it now, because if I were Southern, I would turn it into an industrial park. I, you know, I wouldn't be sitting on that property, just, you know, waiting, you know, on the whims of the town. I don't think that. We are in lockstep with town council, which is why we were supposed to have that meeting in March. With town council to figure out what their priorities are, um. If they are truly saying that they would have approved a plan that was mixed use, so there were a hundred apartments back there, but there were businesses in there. Maybe a medical facility.
Yeah.
I I find that argument to be a little at odds with the fact that everybody was complaining about the traffic and. All of the other things that went into, it it seemed like nobody wanted, that people didn't want anything going in back there.
People, yeah.
Which is, whatever, I. Maybe we just need to be like. Maybe we just need to be like moving on from the tire factories at this point. It it. It's in the hands of a developer who has the buy rights to turn it into an industrial park, and maybe that's what they're gonna do. I don't think we as a town can approach them again and say. These are our priorities. Give us a plan that, you know, that presents a mixed use facility. Like, I don't think we have. Any room to do that in this way. Because I don't, I don't have any confidence as a planning commissioner. To approach them again and say, this is actually what our priority is at this point, because we don't know what our. Okay, but I mean, why not approach them and say? That didn't work out very well. Let's look at that alternative. I would just do what they have the viral to do at this point, because I don't think our priorities are the live return.
Okay.
I wish, I wish. I'm just being honest that I don't, I would not, I would not, I would not waste my. If I were to, I think that's too bad, because I think I agree one hundred percent. But yeah, I'm not saying that I want this to be the situation. No, I know. However, I just think this, I think if we could identify what our actual goals are. And we could identify and say, yes, like. Right, exactly. That's my.
But 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 again, if it's really specific, it's to the exclusion of.
I don't think it needs to.
So let's just, but let's just try to skirt that line and find that balance in in our future specificity.
To be more specific than it is. I'm not saying that we need to detail everything so that, you know, nobody could ever meet the goals. I just think it needs to be more specific, and as a planning commission, we should know what the priorities of town council are. We should be having conversations of them, and we're not currently, you know, I don't think up through any fault of our own. Um, but if we had, if we were in lockstep with them, then we could approach. Southern and say, hey, we we actually have a plan now. We have something that we think. Would pass the planning commission and the town council, so we think that you should take the time. To bring this back in front of us, the time and the money. Don't turn it into an industrial. Do this with it instead, because we will approve that.
A a goo- a good, simple example of that is the Tiger Fuels Market and the Car Wash.
Right.
That we had this comp plan language that that site was good for future commercial. And ought to be auto oriented in a way that downtown is more pedestrian oriented. We had that.
Right.
And then in the. The community survey that followed this plan, Car Wash was one of the businesses that people around here said they wanted. And then we had a a neighbor downtown who knew the owner of Tiger Fuel, and they had lunch and he said, it looks like the community wants this.
Right.
And they asked me, you know, does the community want this? And I could point to, yeah, here's our plan language that says we're okay with this, and the S U P moved just fine. Um, that. That now it should follow. Right.
Because. We are in sync with what the town council wants and what the community is saying they want. So I do think. Well, these focus groups will be extremely helpful in nailing that thing. I do think we need more participation from town council, and as you think, this should be more specific.
Cool. Well said.
But pared down.
But and and pared down, absolutely pared down. This is, this is too much.
Well, and I think it's also important for us to remind town council that. This is the will of the people, so this is what they should be looking at and following, not their own. Ideas and agendas about what they think. So if. There's a plan in here, it's because it came from those that. Participated in government that we're governing.
Right. Yeah, and and I think this document should be. Our way of leading, of leading this town and and and. Actually putting forth what what people who are willing to come out in person are saying that they want.
So to so to that end, let's try to move the conversation forward so that we don't continue to talk about the tire factory and. Um, because it will, unfortunately, it's going to come up again, but maybe we can move fast through that.
I I do think, though, getting back to being specific, we are meeting the goal one. Data in the land use.
Okay, and the the goal, the the actual population of the goal is not mentioned here in the goal, but it is mentioned elsewhere in the body of this. So keep that in mind for the future. It's in, it's in the introduction or whatever section it's in.
That's kind of disjointed, I feel like.
Well, but the.
The first pages are are an overview, and then it goes through it again specifically. It's kind of disjointed.
And I and I can't, I can't remember where that text change happened. Um.
Right.
Who wrote that clause and who took it out?
I also think the implementation plan being a whole separate section is disjointed.
Okay.
I think we should have our. Right, yeah, like this is, this is the implementation.
I could see a or or even a parenthetical with those smart phrases of who who does it? How much do you think it's gonna cost? When's it gonna happen?
Right. And here are the things that we can do, like changing our ordinance to support these things.
Can you remember that?
Sure.
Because that's a change to the structure, um. Okay, so include.
Implementation guidance in each section.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Perfect.
That'll make it more help. I I get that. As you read this, you're like, oh, I care about this issue. How is this issue getting implemented?
That that makes really good sense. I like that. I wonder why they laid it out the way they did. I mean, I I guess it's helpful for. People who who are just concerned about how this is actually gonna happen, whether it's just pie in the sky or not, but. But I, I, yeah, I kind of like having it within each section. Or within each goal.
If the sections are shorter, it'll it'll flow.
It'll flow better, yes. Maybe that's what happened. Okay, so what about objective two? Do we feel like goal? I mean, I didn't read these, did. Ensure that sufficient resources and infrastructure exist to accommodate such growth and development before it occurs. So.
That's a big one.
It is a big one, and. I mean, this a good portion of the end of this that goes into that in great detail, so. I don't know how much of that. Is necessary either, but. I mean, is isn't that kind of common sense? Does that bear repeating here? I feel like. Anyway, yes, of course, we're, this is a continuing goal or continuing strategy. Pedestrian emphasis, alternate routes, point, access points, creative solutions to address traffic. Um.
We actually like this stuff that we love, like this particular objective. Strategy. The objective isn't an objective. It's a goal, but the strategy is a good.
Yeah, and the 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 debate then goes on to that word sufficient capacity, that you'll you'll often hear debate of. This development is happening, camera won't handle it, and we examine, is there sufficient capacity, or does an improvement need to be made? Um, and then you, you know, how are you judging sufficiency? But yes, these are the boxes that need to be checked before you improve something.
Right.
Why is there such a disparity between what we find hazardous as far as road conditions for road pathways and things like that? And what? V dot.
What they might again follow for, I think because people aren't dying. In town. They're dying on plenty. So they, they make a lot of adjustments and and they try to figure out strategies to pick that road, like flattening the, you know, the. Yeah, so that you can have line of sight, things like that. People die on that road all the time, but, yeah, I don't.
It it's gonna continue to be a problem that like by the by the traffic engineer's guidebook, like all of our roads are fine. But that's not how people feel.
I mean, it's it's part of why, um, it's hard to hear. Flat out statistics about things, because I don't know what school of thought it's coming from.
Yeah.
Um, you know. They say there's no traffic problem here in town, but I can tell you that. You know, I felt like I got almost killed a couple of times just getting out of my car, right? You know, so it's, it's an interesting conundrum.
Yeah.
But I think that that would be, I guess if we had more of a budget, we could make some adjustments ourselves, but. You know, when you look at Farnham Street, I know we all have ideas about how that could be better or whatever, but. It's a, it's a, that's just one of the many problems that we've all been talking about.
Yeah.
And nothing happens.
I don't know why we don't have like a flashing crosswalk. We talk about all the time. Why aren't we driving these changes as a planning commission?
Yeah, fair.
Like, what do we need to do to get that, to make that happen?
Well, there was a a V dot study regarding those crosswalks, right? And or you were doing a study regarding the crosswalks at Halloween?
Right, yeah, yeah, I was popping thing.
Okay, can we learn more about our observations? I mean, did we have any takeaways from that that we can? Implement?
It was popular.
It was popular, okay.
Is there a repository of feedback that we got from the community?
Yeah, I stand at all in summer, I stay, yeah. Um. I think that's that's really, that's very fair to put into this kind of action language of, you know. This. These safety questions are important, and this is where we see a problem, and. Yes, it's like not a V dot critical, people are dying here regularly issue, but we still want to do something. So let's, let's, let's work on it.
Stop pedestrians with the crosswalk, like I tried to cross the street tonight, even.
Took me like ten hours.
Right. And you know, I I think it's a lot of issues. You need the flashing lights in the walk, in because the. The cars coming down the road, if I'm standing, I have to get out into the road. Beyond the parked car along the streets, even be visible. And then by that time, by the time you see somebody, you're already like passing them. And waving sorry, it didn't mean almost hit you, like, I mean, I think some people don't care. But, you know, genuinely, I think, I think people just, you can't see people standing there, but if we have the flashing lights and. And it's not just that specific, it's, but we know that there are problems in town. We need to be fixing them so that the town has. Confidence in us when we bring toward new projects and new plans. Otherwise, if we never answer these questions. Like, I hear all of the time that that people are unhappy with Cabbles Town as maintenance. If we never answer these questions and we never address the problem, then when new projects come before town. People do not have confidence, but the town can handle it.
Yeah.
So so what do we have to do to get this to be addressed? Because we have talked about it before. What, I mean, do we need to have?
And see.
I'm not a traffic expert.
For this example, it would be a goal for us to make the streets safer. Drill down strategy that says, flashing light, this is the person that you go to or. You know, this is the committee you go to, and, you know, they're directed from there, you know. Yeah. Yeah, and so there's a recourse, and I think that. I think that we have limits in the town office as far as what they can do. To support all these things we might come up with.
Yeah.
But I think that. Coming up with a strategy to maybe spread out, because. Town council has committees, and I don't know that they're really. They have action items either, but I think that, you know. If we have an. Economic. Development committee or some sort of, you know. Safety committee or whatever it comes out to be. Then we have a way to structure some volunteers possibly. I know it's really hard, but. It comes down to the fact that I'm constantly telling people, well, just call me or just email me. Um, because I'm not getting emails, but I'm telling everyone that I can volunteer for things. Not everything, but, you know, just contact me, and then people be like, oh, my wish we never, we could really be real. And it's part of why we need a volunteer network and a way to contact the community. About things that we're interested in.
I also would like to be able to add things to the agenda. Before the agenda comes out, I would be nice, you know, we can say, hey. This is an important item. It keeps coming up over and over again, like, let's put this on the. Uh, the agenda, because I feel like the agenda gets set for us, and then we just follow that, and we, you know. Like, you guys are the neck, and, you know. You're swiveling the head wherever you want it to go, but like, I want to start setting up with these agendas and and making priorities.
I've I've heard that from council members too, that, um, be- between meetings, they hear something, they think of something, and like, well, I want to get this up on the agenda.
Right.
Um, so that's, um, it's a good practice for y'all to think about as a commission of what kind of. Pre-meeting or back and forth with staff and the chair, do you want to have when, when you have that idea halfway between the meetings of like, oh, I want this on the agenda? We don't have much of an agenda setting process. It is by and large, here's what I know from the last meeting. Anything that's come in equals an agenda, and I don't check it with you beforehand of, I haven't sent it yet, but are we good? So another layer of that. Um.
Well, let's, let's add, um. Not traffic, but road safety and. Pedestrian safety.
That is something that's addressed in section E, developed community.
Well, I don't know if we're ever gonna get to that.
Well, we're talking about a lot of what I thought of that. Again, I was, I ended up getting a little more lost in the forest instead of the trees themselves, and you guys were speaking. Um, very, uh, silly, like, so the issues that I have mainly, that this is very unfocused. There are no clear action items. There's no clear direction. It just says, this is what we want. Well, it's fantastic.
Yeah.
And that's useless.
Yeah, I I ab- absolutely, and this, this one, I I think this is one of the worst. We're like. Yeah, it's specific, but but it doesn't, it doesn't say.
Every five years, then we should be treating each edit as more of a revision of a five year plan. Not like, it's great to have an overarching comprehensive sort of idea. Or set of values that we're moving towards, but we need, we need a much clearer, much more specific, not too specific, but. When we're talking about pedestrian safety, okay, we need to be more clear to delineate our sidewalks and increase sidelines.
Yeah.
Think about how to do that and then move on to the next strategy.
Right.
Um, I want to see this as more of a five year plan, not a five year update.
So coming up with those specifics is gonna be a lot of work. It's if not, we're gonna have to have focus groups to, first of all. Get through the meeting where we've talked about whether we've accomplished these or not, and if if not, do we still want to work on them? Then have focus groups so that we can get community input, so everyone's on board, and then it's gonna take a lot of time to go through. And figure out what our goals should be, and then the specifics of how to accomplish all those tools. That's a lot.
I know it's a lot, and it's actually a lot when you look at it as a full document, but if we're paring it down.
Yeah.
I want a very, very easy section.
But did you? Yours was the longest.
What's it?
Yeah, you had the most goals.
What did you see? Which which piece was it? What did you find?
She was on C.
Yeah, so.
Economic development.
Economic development.
Okay, right, right.
I can go through that section and come up with more concrete examples. Following that, you know, guide, um, you know, even. Before we have decided whether we want to pitch any or or keep on or whatever, and I really don't think it would take that long. So I think if we look at. At a, you know, a section by section kind of thing, and if we're all. At a, you know, a section by section kind of thing, and if we're all looking at it and all reviewing it. And coming up with, okay, this is what I think we've got to get together on that.
Exactly where my hands are, if I understand you correctly, I think that it's valuable for us each to be focusing on one section. But I think it's to a detriment to be doing it discreetly. I would much rather see. And a kind of system where over the course of five meetings, we're all coming prepared, having read that particular section and then. Talking amongst ourselves to identify, well, okay, that's a good idea. I didn't think about that. Let's consider that as possible revision. As opposed to each of us just discreetly looking at it and then coming up with our own ideas, I think has been much more valuable to.
Yeah, I don't think that anyone should be responsible for coming up with the strategies. But rather to go through and figure out, did this happen, did it not happen with? And bringing it to the table so that we could agree if there's disagreement.
To do too much at one time, um, I almost feel I agree with you that we should go through. And say if we have accomplished this and whether we wanna keep or pitch it. Um, because until we do that, we can't, we would just be wasting our time on things that we may not. Have already done or may not have accomplished and wanna move forward.
And 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 again, the goal will be to come up with a list of what. We could, we're we're agreeing is done, what we think based upon this might still need work and then taking that to the focus groups. And seeing if if they agree with us or not.
Yeah, and I think we should have, so the first focus group. Uh, we should try to keep our focus groups and have like have the same people attend. You, I think we need to have multiple sessions for land use or economic development. And say, here are the the strategy, you know, the goals, the goals and the objectives and the strategies that we've laid out or that were laid out. Here are the ones we've met. And then the first meeting should really be focused on. Of the ones that we haven't met, are those still our priorities in the town? And if they are, that's great, and if they're not, what are our priorities? And then the follow up meeting should be. These are the the strategies and the objectives that we've said are our priority. Now of the objectives that we've set are our priorities. Now how? Let's reinform ways that we can make these things happen. That should be the follow up meeting and it should be very like, it it should be very clear that we're gonna have to be creative as a town. Because we don't have much money. So what are some out of the box thinking that we could, you know, we could hit these these goals and objectives? In the cheapest way possible, so we need a volunteer committee, you know, let's um. You know, update our ordinance and stats free. But you know, not as expensive as putting in sidewalks for safety, you know. But the flashers that might be, you know, maybe we have some fundraisers. We get, you know, we get community engaged and involved in making improvements in this town.
Thinking of that, do you have an update after the RFP uh meeting that you had for the website?
It had six responsive firms, um, cutting them to three went really well. We'll do some interviews and demos with them and that's that's on track and uh I think doable. Make it easier to keep track of all this.
Oh, the website, yeah.
So what is the? What do we have on the agenda for next meeting? It's just the subdivision?
We'll we'll work through the subdivision ordinance. If you if you didn't get a copy at the last meeting, I have a couple here of that checklist. And we'll work through that ordinance and it's a it's a step by step. Look that all of those things that we need on a plan are on that plan. So the the applicants will be with us and we'll go through it together and it's a little bit of where's Waldo, but. Uh, this is what we say we needed, is it here? And if they don't have it, we provide that feedback and they need to update their plan.
Do you have a um bridge out of this gentleman?
Yes, I got a couple more of those. Um, so it it takes a while, but it's a it's a step by step. Here's what we're looking for, where is it? And have that conversation with the with the applicant.
So back to land use. Do we think that this has to be a continuing goal? I mean, it is something that we're actively working on, cause we still had lands that. Well, land use in general, there's multiple goals in here, there's two goals. We we feel like we've met goal one, but do we wanna continue to maintain a healthy growth and and? Whatever that means, we don't need to get into that right now, but I think. I think it's reasonable to say that this is something we need to continue to include in our comprehensive plan while there's still undeveloped land out there. Or do we feel like we've already completed a zoning and we don't have to work on this?
Is all of the land that could be developed? Within the town but like property or town uh boundary? Is all of that knocked out basically?
Is that is that this? But this is just, this is it though. There's like there's other little parcels that are small, they can't be subdivided.
I don't think there's anything like the the factory parcel. That and then like, I don't think there's anything else bigger than like ten acres. So it's a it's a pretty big fork in the road, whether this proceeds by right or whether something else happens.
But that's not comp plan, that's that's gonna happen this year or or not. Okay.
Yeah, maybe in the in the time that it takes to do a comp plan update. Whatever's gonna happen is gonna happen. So yeah, you use current comp plan, not new comp plan.
But we but we'll always have these values and I think it's important to put them in writing somewhere. You know, the pedestrians are mentioned on. Well, infrastructure. Yeah, I mean, a lot of this is gonna go away. Cause this is related to land subdivisions and.
So when you say the values, are you according that to the goals? In this document or are you saying they're missing from this document, should we have?
Well, I think. What I maybe I shouldn't use the word values, the words that they're using is strategy and objectives. Like objective number two. Ensure that sufficient resources and infrastructure exist to accommodate such growth and development. So that's develop developments already probably done, so that's irrelevant.
The before it occurs is important though, like. We we can't approve this thing because this infrastructure isn't ready. Is different from this development is happening at the same time as the infrastructure and they will get better together. Um, thi- this is um conservative language that you. You get all your infrastructure in place before you do the development, in contrast to they move along together.
Well, we may not need this language over the next five years.
I think. We should be thinking about the possibility of. The, you know, the distant future too, but what are borders spanned? As that happens in the recent past. So I I think we should leave this like if we're considering taking this out, I think.
But is that gonna happen? We're not planning for that to happen in the next five years.
I don't think we should take this out though, that's what we're suggesting, but maybe, you know, if if we want to document somewhere in here that we feel like. We have met these goals. We can focus on other goals that we haven't met. Perhaps like economic development question or this word in teenage, you know, after resources. I don't think we should take this out, like that's what.
Well, I don't think it needs to be included in the next plan, not that we're, you know, it's it's in this plan for posterity, but we could agree that we. Have met this and it or it's a non-issue. I mean, it's not, as as long as the tire factor is not developed, it's still, but the small area plan covers it.
Okay, but I think if this is a comprehensive plan, I think it should be in here, whether we think we've met.
It feels like pretty general, pretty general language.
Right.
Um, you did hit on something really important that I didn't wanna lose about town boundaries, that um. This is the this is the place where you talk about are the town boundaries gonna change and uh. If if you're gonna start that ball rolling, it needs to go in here first. And so far, my answer, when anybody from outside of town has said, can I be in the town? I point to the comp plan and say, we're not talking about increasing the boundaries of the town, so probably no. If you're looking twenty years, if you're looking twenty years ahead, do you think in twenty years? This, you know, like belt of rural area around the town is gonna come into the town. You can begin to have conversation about in twenty years, we think the town is gonna be bigger. And here's what that would eventually look like, and there's a lot involved in it from. Running water lines and roads to and so on, but you. Plant those seeds in a comp plan update first.
Right, and that could be an objective or a strategy for increasing the population of the town.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, thirty thirty years ago, we grew like. You know, from from this to this was a big, it was a big boundary adjustment and we're still. Building in to the to the space that was taken in there. Which tremendous, you you add the you add the boundaries, you take in a ton of assets, yeah. And some of these property owners want that, like um uh. If if you have a property that's potentially commercially developable, right now it's in Amaral County rural area and. Developing it is really hard, so tho- those property owners are interested in being in town to where they can do town things and not. Rural area conservation things.
Right.
Well, so are you linked with town or not, that maybe we should consider putting one into the comp plan?
It it'll it'll never move anywhere unless it comes in here. Um, the the plan for Gordonsville is very clear about. This is our current town limits and this is our future town limits and it's gonna take a while before we're ready to legally do the thing. But we should start talking to our neighbors and planning for road and sidewalk improvements, waterline improvements. Or if you if you didn't, if you didn't like that, you say, I like all of this rural area the way it is, I want it to stay that way forever, the town boundaries are finding the way they are, put that in the plan. And say the town boundaries are finally one and a half square miles is plenty.
Right, that shows an intention. Right.
But so land use in the next five years, so we have this. Land, we have the basically the land that's owned by Southern. And. I mean, maybe this will be done in in this year and. If it is done in this year, then this doesn't need to make it into a future complaint, cause it's it's done, like if it's done. As in. I guess it's never done until they break ground.
Too many possibilities to pull out any kind of change in our plans for population growth.
Yeah, and you know, I'm not looking at this comp and just the next five years, looking at this as this is the comprehensive plan. I'm more than how Scottville, this is the vision for the town.
So then if we don't accomplish everything in the next five years, that's okay.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So well, I agree with that. So then let's let's try to.
The the time period is twenty years and yeah, you updated every five years, but like. Wh- wh- what what community, I don't have children. If I had children next year, what would I want the town to look like for them when they graduate from high school? And I try to make that vision a reality and then in five years, we're like, okay, we made some progress on that, how are we gonna adjust it? But you should be looking that far ahead.
So then it's not like then we can't look at this and say we failed on this, it's just not something that. Was a priority in this in this term. So how do we forecast out for twenty years? I mean, that chart that we have that covered three years. I was thinking, should it cover five and then that's it and then say other things are future goals?
I think everything in here should be a goal that we try to attain in the next five years. I don't think that we'll get there. That I think these both the strategies need to be called significantly.
So the goals and strategies should address the the next five years, but then the bigger picture. That's laid out in the first section.
We should be moving towards that goal about twenty years. You know, what do we wanna see then? And I think that it's going to involve the town getting bigger. And that's why I'm kind of pushing with these questions about the boundary adjustments, you know, we. If we decided, I mean, I I don't know whether we should put more research into that, you know, what? What land lies around the outside and would it be, you know, fruitful for us to? Kind of add that to the town or have it be part of our vision of the future.
Yeah, in important complicated conversation, but it has to start somewhere.
I know, it does, and I'm glad we're we're tackling at least something tonight.
I just just to make a comment, I have long thought on that subject and. Do think there is value, I don't know whether it's this comp plan or in the future, but thinking about. The area around us, the ring around Scottsville, both in Fluvana, especially in Albemarle, has grown a lot in the last. Five to ten years and they may not wanna be a part of Scottsville, but there is a ring out there that has successfully done well and. It would be interesting for us to continue to think about what does the twenty or thirty year plan look like.
Well, yeah, I think that we should at least have it on our agenda as far as this document is concerned. To talk about what that might look like in twenty years or what that might look like in five years or whatever.
But yeah, it's that's momentous. But it's not crazy.
No, it's not. I think it's really important that we're having this conversation. I'm really glad we're looking. At things a little bit more focused.
Does it mention in here that it's a twenty year? Kind of a long term outlook, so I don't think it really explains that in the introduction. It might be helpful to look at that down the road.
And we're talking about it as a general mechanism.
Come from like the at the. At the Amaral County level, they call it AC forty four, because twenty forty four is the time period they're thinking of. I think it's in the law. No, it's not, it's not in the code, but but they are long range recommendations for for general development. Twenty years is a rule of thumb I've seen in a lot of these. Okay.
Okay, um, how about we jump ahead to see historic scenic and natural resources?
This was the section, especially that first objective where I thought it was pretty nebulous, um.
Because this is a sort of thing that's more along the lines of like. A bigger picture of value, this isn't not, this isn't something that needs to be worked on necessarily in the next five years.
I I think for women, preserve, protect and enhance the historic character and feature of Scottville.
Um, where we're talking about historic structures. Um, especially in that strategy one at the end require owners to fix structures to maintain and preserve the buildings according to current architectural standards. We have a bunch of empty buildings along Main and Valley Street. Um, I thought this would be a great section to add something very specific about um. Plans to get those buildings filled. Um. If that, uh, you know, I, I don't know what the options are for, for the incentives or the, you know. I mean, there could be, but I think, you know, I, I think it would be great to research.
Yeah.
The, the, like, different options and I, and you know, I don't know what all of those questions could be, but there's. Smarter people out there who might know the answer to those questions, um. So we offer tax credits, could we offer, you know, could we disincentivize? Keeping those, those storefronts vacant by some sort of penalty, like if, if we need to go there, like. Is that something we can do over town? Like, why are people sitting on these properties and not doing anything? But I would like to really delve into that.
Yeah, I do think that it's an accurate statement, that there are people that have buildings that. Uh, can afford not to rent, means they don't have, they don't lose their house or their. Their entire income is just a bit of that, I think that's accurate. Uh, you have multiple people who lose multiple buildings. And again, doesn't incentivize them to, you know, they work on one, then the other, then the other. Um, so you got, you know, bottom line is it comes down to what's he want? You know, when nation building started to do some work, they knew that the roof when they bought it was uh, faulty. They knew they had to repair it, they did, that caused the problem, we shut down. And the gentleman now is working on another project, and that's where he's been. And so this project's just sitting, she has every right to the property, and they'll get back to it when they can. Um, the Radley property has a commercial space down below, she doesn't wanna do that, and she boarded it up, she was right to, you know.
Well, what can we do creatively to? Get people to care more about the town or to like, to want to, to not leave their buildings? I have heard comments about people, owners living in other areas of New York. Don't really care about what's going on down in Scottsville, but. Um, there's gotta be something. Do you know of any other towns that have come across this problem?
It's a, it's a widespread, it's a common problem. Every place with a historic district has this, um. S- some state grants can help incentivize the thing, like, hey, there's this. Here's this grant and loan program tactic. If, yeah, if, if mon- if money is the problem, let's help you, let's help you get a loan. Yeah, yeah, the, um, e- every, lots of cities want a vacant buildings tax, you can't, it's illegal.
Yeah.
Um, if they, like, like the, like the gentleman said, if, if I choose to keep my building vacant, that's my choice. You can create friction with that. One of them is taxes, right? Right now, there's no local tax that creates a carrying cost on this building.
Yeah.
You raise a tax high enough, they'll do something with it or sell it so that they can deal with the tax bill.
Can you?
Can't target specific properties. It has to be the same rate on all the real estate and you can't tax it differently based on how it's used. Like vacant building tax or local, you couldn't say like, well, if, if you live in the building, you pay lower tax, can't do that.
And I keep thinking of the extenuating circumstances with like, be going on this.
Yeah, sure.
Creating a hardship, but for the most part, I'm envisioning that this is not that.
Well, one way that we do create a hardship is with um, ARB and, and restrictions that we put on historic homes.
Yep. Yeah, and that's certainly been common, common feedback on these that uh. They, I think they've gotten a lot better in being customer friendly than what they used to be, but it's still fairly unpopular for. This is my building and you're telling me what to do with it and.
Yeah, like the time I had to replace my roof and had to pay like thirty percent more for a metal roof.
Right, some, so, uh, I think it's a fair question whether it's more trouble than it's worth.
I just wanna say that as a town, we have tried, we have exhausted all of our options, maybe it's owners.
Mm-hmm.
I don't wanna keep hearing, well, this is just there, this is just the way it is, and this is just the right that they have, that's fine, and that may be true. However, I feel like as a town, we need to make. A concerted effort to approach these owners and say, what can we do? We want to partner with you. To get these buildings filled, like, that's, that's what I'm. Yeah, and so, and if they say, you know what, I'm not interested, at least we tried. But I feel like this one would count even better.
One, one of, outs- outside the box briefly, we have the authority for revolving loan funds and buying and selling real estate. So some, some localities do that and they're basically flipping property to where, you know. Set yourself up a million dollar revolving fund.
Right.
Buy property, fix it up and sell it.
Well, that would be a brilliant idea a couple of years ago.
Prices are higher now.
I think prices are a little prohibitive right now, but who knows, maybe.
I think you should continue what you're doing, get a great comprehensive plan that explains what you all want to see in the coming years. All that inertia will start building and it's not gonna happen overnight. But what you'll see a gradual change and people will start taking an interest. In doing something part, and maybe because people are desperate and because they wanna put their businesses in there or something. It all starts, you did it, Lisa earlier, when you said nothing. Okay, it happened, but nothing is really happening. There's a reason nothing is happening. If you look at the comprehensive plan, I mean, you know, there, there's, there's a reason that nothing is happening in Scottsville. Nobody felt strong enough that they were stronger, playing any place, nobody did anything. Now they're starting to do some stuff. So as you go forward. Personally, I think you're thinking about the right things. What do you wanna see in Scottsville? You know, hearing the movie, wanna, you know, think about it. I don't, I don't know anything about comprehensive plan, but I can tell you. How to create stuff that is successful and that is creating a community spirit. And, and looking at that and using a comprehensive plan to do that and make everything a little bit better. And you won't have to worry about empty buildings. If you build in towns that are successful. You go and look at all the ones that are successful, if you wanna know why they aren't successful, go and ask them. Did you have any buildings that weren't? I mean, weren't in there? What happens? Why, why did somebody potentially wanna do that? I can tell you what they're probably gonna say is, hey, you got a plan? We, we saw people started funding, we were building in the community, people wanted to be here, then you had people. Take care of the problem. Then you probably still have people that may actually don't even know if I'm doing. Um, to them, and that's their case, but you know, I, I just think that it will. It will build upon itself and it'll figure it out.
Yeah, like what if we approached, you know, all of the, those people that came forward and participated in that, you know. Um, grant program that we had for the small businesses a couple of years ago. What if we had like, hey, these five small businesses want to rent your space? Like, come on, come off of it, like, this is.
That worked really well. We made a list of available real estate.
Right.
And, and had a list of ready businesses and introduced them and a cou- and a couple of them stuck.
Yeah, I think we should be doing everything we can to get this town to be vibrant and to be a welcoming community and. I think we, we just have to be really creative. And, you know, I think we're already doing things that are creative and. Getting people.
Well, and I think we'll probably touch on that more in economic development.
Mm-hmm.
What about, how important is it to maintain historic structures?
I think it's, it, from what I've heard people say, and you, you know, I think it's really important, um. I was sad to see, I mean, even though we approved it and I'm still for it, but the building was torn down, you know, or the. The um, car wash is getting done, that, that happened this week. It's a little sad. I love old houses, obviously, I know. Hundred-year-old house.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I do think it's important, um. I too, you know, I, I, I have to deal with ARB, um. So I, I think we can do things that make the process less onerous, um, for people. But I, I am encouraged by the fact that that is a very involved and interactive committee. Off of town council, I, I think that that. Is well established and, and very good for the towns, yeah. So I also, I think that's great. I also think Luke keeps telling, my husband keeps telling me that in order to get the levee built. We had to make some sort of, um. We, we have to make things. Because that, if the levee was built to protect.
It's the justification, what are we rejecting?
So I, I think, I think it's important. It's important too for tourism. If we're gonna put ourselves out there as a, as an historic town. On the river, River County, um, that should not look like, you know. A new city with.
Yeah. That's true.
It shouldn't look like Crozay.
And no card.
Hey, question about strategy six, um. Archaeological sites, that, that came up in, that popped into my head when I was looking at this. Do we have any sort of method to preserve archaeological sites or, or considerations while? We're digging land that hasn't been developed in ages?
Do we know where the archaeological site are?
Yeah. Well, this is my thinking, that stuff gets lost over the years, well.
There's a note in one of the. Previous plans related to the uh, Van Cleef Nature Area about a Monakin site and that. I think there's a, I think it's a generic comment, not a specific comment. Do you know what I'm referring to?
I do.
Yeah, because I mean, we, you know, had Monakin Indians living here before we. Became prolific and invasive and displaced them, so I would imagine there's going to be relics found when they start. Getting into this, this subdivision.
I, I, I don't know exactly what that means. Um, what it makes me think of is, is when um. Bruce Park was built almost twenty years ago. It used some federal money and there was a requirement to do archaeology for the, for the, for the grant. Um, and so we did a, a historical dig. And sure enough, there was. Civil War stuff and colonial stuff and Monakin stuff and it's, it's everywhere. Um, and when you work with federal money, you have to do that archaeology. Private development doesn't have to catalog the same way. Um, so I, I don't know how you, um.
Maybe we could ask them to preserve.
I don't know what that means.
Donate to the museum.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you, if you build, please donate what you find.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, introduce them to the museum. But if you, if you were to dig for a big new foundation in the historic district, that's what you would find.
Yeah, okay. A lot of this is ARB. So we can talk through later whether we think. There's improved, like, suggestions that we might have for ARB.
Are we going to kitchen work him until we're done with this? It's not a lot. And I don't, you know, I won't skip out, but I also need to go soon.
Yeah, I'm doing.
Yeah, I think minus that's a good stopping point, um. Two things, it came up. About our meeting with town council and, and that work session that we were talking about doing, what, is there a plan for that or are we gonna talk about that next week?
We, we didn't announce a date when council met, uh.
They sounded like they didn't wanna spend the money.
Uh, yes, they, they wanted to try to do it uh, in-house with volunteers.
Yeah.
First.
Is, is it true that that day session would be four thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's what, that's what the UVA center was asking.
I don't blame them for not wanting to do that.
Matt.
Yes, sir.
I cannot recall, have you explained to the commissioners what you did years ago or? I, I, I don't remember. I know we've talked about it in council, did we talk about it in commission?
I, I, I believe so, the, the, take the facilitated day and work through strategic planning and goal setting and have planning commission present for part of it and do it on a Saturday.
Yeah, that, that was very helpful for the coun- actually, that's, that's actually how we ended up getting to where we did with the factory from doing that, but. That being said, it would be helpful to do, I think there's, I think it's gonna happen one way or the other, Matt, wouldn't you say that's just a matter of who does it?
Ye- yes, ca- council supported uh, taking a Saturday and working through that together and, and yes, including planning commission. But um, trying to do it without professional help first.
What would they work through?
Their, their goals and priorities as a group. What, what do they see from each other? What do they wanna see from staff?
It was actually a very helpful meeting we did when Matt first came because it helped us to kinda. Understand each other as counselors. Most of the time, we're having a meeting, even, even a longer meeting like this isn't like that. That was a. Matt, was that kind of almost all day or something? I forget how long it was.
It was, it was probably five or six hours together.
It was very helpful, it was a good meeting.
Um, I talked to Beth Clark from Scan, she's on the board at Scan.
Okay.
And she mentioned that they had a group workshop. Like a strategic planning workshop and Kelly Croze officiated. Or moderated, whatever the term is, and she's apparently very organized and.
Yeah.
Really good at that sort of thing, so maybe we can get her to help out.
I've seen those skills in her, yeah.
Okay, all right, so we're still gonna talk about that next week. You could, you give us a date or, I mean, do we wanna just have, so here was my thinking. I'd like to. Know that whatever goals we're working on, we're going to get support. And they're not gonna get shot down and we're gonna be proceeding. We have very different roles, very different responsibilities, but we're, we do work together on projects, so. We need to know what they're, that they're in line with us and our goals.
How do we approach that? Do you mean you're going through like a draft with a comprehensive plan or? Do you mean talking to them about specific projects?
Well, that's why I wanted to know like what our goals are for the year and that's where I came up with that list.
Yeah, I could find.
So that's only zoning, what other goals do we have?
Zoning is the big thing that you can be proactive on, where, you know, this, this law exists and you can work on it and change it, recommend edits back up. A lot of the rest of your work is driven by the applications that come in and you can't control that.
Well, and we do still wanna work on Airbnb and what our philosophy is on that.
Yep, so I'd, I'd, I'd add homestays to that list as a thing that we.
Well, that's just a part of it, homestays, you know. So zoning is a huge part of what we do. I think we could make really good decisions on that, but if there's anything controversial, maybe they won't back us up on it.
What, what if I showed that um, previous work list with the, the dozen items, showed that to town council? Cuz it's been a couple of years since they've seen it too and they have new members, so they don't have to pre-make their decisions, but are they interested in looking at? All of these things and kinda get a, a bit of an endorsement on working on that. That, that'd be, that'd be a useful report back.
Okay.
Right?
If there's anything that they don't think we should be working on, then.
Yeah, cuz.
Maybe, maybe we shouldn't waste our time on it.
Cuz one answer would be, I think it's fine the way it is, don't worry about it. And if they all felt that way, then, okay.
We don't wanna address that as maybe a problem.
You are certainly within your rights to recommend what you think is appropriate and if, if, you know, it's, it's of moral importance to you by all means.
Awesome.
Some people have very strong opinions about parking regulations.
Right.
I mean it.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, does that kinda answer your question about. Working with them and, and the concerns that were raised today? Working with town council and how we're proceeding in one direction and. They're not always on board with us. I mean, this is where this came from. We, we talked about wanting to work with town council more and be on the same page. What do you guys see as a need for this conversation with town council?
I want to know what their vision is for moving this town.
Because you don't feel that it's.
I don't feel that. Trying to be. Trying to be. Yeah, I. And I don't know if, if town council has any kind of, you know. Maybe they need to work amongst themselves before they can give us an idea of what we. I don't even think they're with each other.
Right.
Organization that has much of a vision.
Well, and, and unfortunately that impacts us and our work. And that impacts future development and the implementation of the comprehensive plan.
Exactly.
I, I, I had that problem and I, I don't mind sharing that, that in, in talking with this, uh, engineer who was working on the by rights commission here. We acknowledged this is a by right plan. There's nothing to negotiate here. And I didn't, I didn't feel like I was empowered by my council guidance and my planning guidance to say. Look, if you designed it this way. It would be received favorably. And it's hard for me to do outreach if I can't tell somebody, this is what we're looking for. And so the best I could say was, well, this is by right. If you do it, we'll give it the by right treatment.
Right, and that's where I was going to do. Conversation earlier where I would never, I would not also feel confident in telling somebody. Please bring this back before us because I have any confidence that it will be. And, and maybe what is their, what is their view of. Our commission, um, and what our responsibilities are. So maybe there's a disconnect there as well. Um, I don't think it's a lack of respect. I just think it's, you know, everybody's kind of thinking. I'm in it for myself and let's just do this. And I, I think we get lost in the shuttle and then on that, but. Um, yeah, just some sort of communication. That would be great.
Yeah.
Okay, um. On that note, I did wanna be on the agenda for the town council meeting. Can you put me on the agenda so I can talk about this?
Yeah, sure. As it'll be, uh. Yeah, new, new, new business, um, plan you slated on. Here's what you got. Sure.
What day is that?
Work session on the thirteenth. Public session on the, on the twentieth. So, uh. Which, um. Is it feeling more like a static report or a, or a conversation that you wanna have in work session?
A conversation about priorities and goals and this is by right. But what, you know, what do we see for ourselves?
Yeah.
What is our, you know, our land use future?
Yeah.
I mean.
Mr. Gritsko, does that feel okay for work session? You know, do, do it around this round table and show this and talk about what it means.
Yeah, I think it's very helpful to have, uh, uh, our chair come and talk. And then have the council hear the intent of everybody wanting to get on the same page.
Okay.
I mean, that, this is a big enough project that this alone could be a work session, but that's in the future.
I, I, I did tee this up at the council meetings. The past two times they met, that it was, it was coming. It wouldn't be something that required council vote, but it would get a lot of attention in the community. So they needed to be aware of, it's on the radar, um, so that they're not caught blindsided by it.
Okay. Getting road safety and pedestrian safety on the agenda. Can we get that on the agenda?
For, for your next meeting?
For our next meeting, do we, if we have time on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm already thinking, I already thinking April, not Monday, but April.
Well, I was thinking for Monday, but you said this, you think this will take up the whole meeting? Going over the site plan. I mean, I guess it is, but it is pretty detailed and.
I, I think it's a solid hour. Um, you might be, you might be tired of subdivision work by that point. So if you wanted to reset and do something that was more. General, like that might be a good change of pace. Maybe, maybe allow an hour for subdivision review and then talk about, um. Pedestrian stuff after that. And if you don't, if you don't finish the subdivision, you just table it after an hour.
Okay.
Yeah.
It, uh, or the develop, you said the develop.
Yes, yeah. And they have ordinances, so they'll be ready to walk through. I'm try- trying to put the, put the onus on them. If they have ordinances, they read these for a living every day. So show us that your plan complies and walk us through so they can help you with the reference of, on page twelve, it says. The street needs to be this wide. Now on page two, over there, it says the street is this wide. Check. We'll do that together.
Did you say we've had a copy of the checklist?
Um, it, 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 it's, um.
It's not the checklist?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a subdivision checklist.
No, it's in, it's in the ordinance in a couple of different places about what has to be in the plant submission. So it amounts to which I do. Yes.
Well, this will be the first subdivision we've ever had to do.
Well, it's kind of interesting.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So what is our next? I'm wondering if we should change our sections. And pin down concrete strategies for what we think individually. And then work as a group. Or should we all take the thing section?
Um, I, I do have one, I do have a complaint thing. Um, Chris, uh, Chris Waring from VCU, he, um, he finished, he's graduated and happily employed. He, he did his, um, master's capstone project on Scottsville scenario planning. And I, I attended his, um, presentation defense and was really impressed with it. He would like to present that up with us.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so he's available next Monday, the sixth, to take fifteen or twenty minutes and show you his, his body of work. He, and he grew up here, so he has a good eye for Scottsville trends. And he, what he, short version was he, he made three different scenario models for how Scottsville would develop in the next twenty years. Um, assuming different styles of development.
Yeah.
So he, he made pictures of what that looks like in the future. If you use this type of law, what do you get? And if you have this approach, what do you get? And it was really helpful for kinda getting a reaction of, I want that kind of future world and not this kind of future world. So it's like an introduction to a plan that was more graphically based.
Yeah.
It, it provided a really good emotional reaction to, I want my town to look like this and not like this. Um, so that might. Might give some inspiration.
I think so. Cause this is our vision.
Yeah, he was able to make it in pictures instead of words.
Well, good, I'm glad he's gonna.
So, so then how should we proceed? Because it, it seems like.
Land use.
Whoa, okay, so tackle one subject at a time?
Yeah, let's do land use, hit it hard. Let us know what you think. What do you think? Yeah. Okay, and I think we should also start to think about the, the very.
Well, this is, but that's, that's, okay, so coming up with questions for the focus group.
Yeah.
So our goal is to go through land use and. Figure out how to parlay that into a conversation in the focus group.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess on our own, just kind of determine. What we think has been accomplished, what definitely hasn't, and then what we have questions about in terms of progress.
Right.
And then go from there to start a discussion on, all right, how do we prioritize what we have left?
But then I think it's not just section B, it's also looking at the future considerations that are raised in, in the rest. Of, cause there's a whole lot of stuff about land use and infrastructure, existing land use on page forty-eight. So how much do you think we should be prepared? How much knowledge should we come into that session with next week, next time?
Um, maybe lo- look at that future land use map. That's a, that's a big, uh, action item and it guides, it guides future rezonings. Sometimes people are well able to say, like. For example, I, I want a Chick-fil-A here. And the way you make that happen is you put it on the future land use map and you rezone it and then you recruit the business. Um, so, so sometimes people are able to react in like those kind of specific ways. And to be, like where that goes is the future land use map.
Where is it? I think it's on the website, right?
Um, it's page thirty-one on the printed document. So it, it looks kind of like the zoning map, but it's different.
And so would that be where we, you know, ideas about expanding town moments?
Potentially, yeah. Yeah, um, cause right now that, you know, we're just talking about current town moments, but if you have like a dotted line that went somewhere else.
Yeah.
It, it, um, and zoom this map out a little bit. It tells a very different story.
So then review section B land use, but along with that is also future land use, the future land use map.
Okay, okay. I wanna get more familiar with that first section that has. Some of the disjointed information that the J and C each section. You know what I mean?
Section one that has the intro and the history and all that.
I mean, I think that's all important to be in there like it is, but I think, um, some sort of. I was gonna say comprehensive plan.
And so we'll talk about that, not for next week, but for the next month in April. Or should we have a special meeting between now and then?
Although, um.
I'd like to do it on a Tuesday or Thursday though.
Okay.
But not the first Thursday, cause that's ARV.
Right.
And not Tuesdays because that's your recurring meeting. So.
I need to say that Monday, Wednesday, night exercise class is so important. Like I'm missing nights and Monday it's.
So, well, second, second Thursday would be like. Not, um, not. Eight days from now, but, um.
Can we do the twenty-third? It's, uh. Fourth Thursday?
Of, of March?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's available here for us.
Okay, all right, seven P M. Oh, okay. You won't, okay.
Yes. Care, Jeff, and you'll eventually need a motion on the date once you guys.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Action today.
So then I can't do the sixteenth. Do we wanna do the ninth?
Of April?
Of March, or is that too soon? We already have a meeting next week?
Yeah, I think that's too soon.
Okay, so how about the thirtieth, Thursday, the thirtieth?
It's gonna come right up against your, um. Your next regular meeting is, or is that very next week?
Right.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
They're, they're about different things.
Yeah, we're kinda limited if we only have Thursdays to work with.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if it's a day.
Does that work for people?
Is it really? It, it might help with a different headspace if you did like lunchtime on a Saturday. It might be, it might be fun.
I definitely feel a little tired at seven, eight, nine o'clock on weeknight.
Yeah, if, if you're, if you're trying to hammer out a focus group thing, like maybe, maybe lunchtime Saturday just gets it done better.
I thought for twenty-fifth.
I think I'm busy that weekend and the weekend before. How about the eleventh?
The eleventh of March?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I'll be out of town, but I have every confidence in you. Please do it.
Yeah, what if we start with the thirtieth, uh. For now, and then possibly around June, uh, in April.
When, when you're actually doing these focus groups, this, this, the Saturday midday, like after the farmer's market or something could work really well.
Right.
That's when you might be able to get your people to come and do it with you.
Okay, Saturday, um, so Thursday, the thirtieth, seven P M, to review land use. Motion? Second? All in favor? Right?
Seven P M, uh, March thirtieth.
Sounds good, thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Beautiful.
All in favor? Sounds unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.